Okay, so we're gonna call the meeting to order at 8:03. Hi Jeff.
Yeah.
Hi Jeff, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay, so I have a terrible memory. Were you on the last call? Your audio is really bad.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm trying to continue on with that problem with the mic.
Oh, problem with the mic.
Problem with the mic, okay. So can you understand us?
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, so, welcome, thank you, everybody for being here. We do have a quorum, so we can move ahead. Just called the meeting to order at 8:03. Let's see, do we have any public comment? Anybody waiting to come in, Bill?
There are no members of public in attendance.
Okay, great. Alright, so our first order of business is approval of the November meeting minutes, which I sent out with the meeting email. Any more, first I need a motion, was that Vince, thank you?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Oh, Mike! Wow, this is cool. We're gonna pause for a second here. Mike, can you hear us? Welcome. Wow, why don't we go around and introduce ourselves, and you can go first, Mike, and then you can learn who all the rest of us are, besides Laura, and Jeff, who I think you already know.
Good morning, my name is Mike Hackett, I am the new Seashouse Principal here at Trumbull High School. I met about two weeks ago with Laura, kind of examining the space we have here at Trumbull High, and I was asking her, why are we not using it more? So I wanna kind of be a part of this group here, and kind of, you know, push more use of it with the Trumbull High current high school students. So, I came from Milford at John Conlon High School, we have about 800 students there, and they have a full broadcast journalism class, and they're on TV, and they're every event at the schools is live, their morning announcements are live, so I just was really questioning why Trumbull High School is not like that. So let's make that push to have that here at Trumbull High.
It's a miracle. We've been wanting someone like you for two decades, so very, very happy to see you. So do you know Beth Gilman?
Yes, very well, yes. I actually started working with her at Worcester Middle School in Stratford, and then she came over to Milford a few years ago.
And she worked at Trumbull High in the history department once upon a time, so I sit on the ACE Foundation with her, wonderful, wonderful lady. Alright, so why don't we go around, I'll start, I'm Kate Donahue, I'm Chairman of the Commission, have been for a while, a couple of years, and have probably been on the Commission for like, I don't know, Vince, how long have we been around? 20 years?
Twenty years, easy, yeah.
Yeah, but in my day job, I'm the CEO of Hamford Research, which is a chemical manufacturing company in Stratford, although I live in Trumbull, grew up there, all my kids went through Trumbull High, blah, 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 care a lot about, and I had a prior career in the cable television industry, which is why I care about this channel in particular. Laura, you wanna go, yeah, go, even though.
Sure. Hi Mike, um, yeah, I'm the Program Manager at Trumbull Community Television, and we met a couple of weeks ago. So my primary responsibility is to keep the station on the air and with programming. So I'm always on the lookout for educational opportunities to report for programming, whether that's at Trumbull High, at the library, at the senior center. You know, most recently at Trumbull High, we reported the post-high school planning for juniors program, which will be going up today. So, and that's, and again, Kate and I have been working, trying to get, as I said to you before, we've been really trying to get more students involved and get, you know, curriculum involved, and get the studio used more, because it's a great, it's a great opportunity, and it's just a shame that it sits idle for far too long.
And I think like anything else, right, any other, like say, club or team that wants to get started, you need to have a champion, you need to have somebody in the building that is into it and willing to carry the water for it. So, on my screen, I have Jeff up next, so Jeff, you wanna go? Just, because I'm not sure everybody on the Commission is familiar with you. Hopefully your mic is working.
Yes, definitely.
Still not, not working. Alright, we'll come back to you after you figure that out. Jens?
Yes, hi, I'm Jens Hauler, I've lived in Trumbull for 25 years, and I've been a member of this committee for, I think, five years. It's really five years.
And give a little bit about what expertise you bring to the table.
So I'm an engineer, a software engineer, and I have been doing video for, I can't, I mean, 20 years, something like that. So, I'm really into technical stuff and how things work, and I should be spending more time with Laura at the station. I keep saying that every time we talk about it, but yeah, that's me.
Great, thanks. Vince?
We have met virtually at a couple of BEI meetings, although we haven't met in person yet. But I am, I'm Vince Feeny, I'm a CPA by trade, I'm a partner with Whittlesey, and I guess the expertise I bring, I'm not, totally not in technical, but more from a financial standpoint. As Kate mentioned, I've been on the committee for, you know, since the inception 20 years ago or so. Longtime Trumbull resident, my kids all went through Trumbull School, so like to stay involved.
Any audits our election results?
Yeah, I audit the election results, right, that's my claim to fame.
Alright, so we were in the middle of approving our November minutes, I had a motion from Vince, and I need a second.
I seconded it.
Oh, thank, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Alright, any corrections? Changes, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. Administratively, I also wanted to talk about our start time. We've historically, I think this was started by John Anick a million years ago, started at quarter to eight. I'm wondering if, I know for me, it looks like it's getting harder and harder to be ready to go then. So is there, we moved this meeting to eight. I'm open to making it a little bit later, even if that works for people, but I just want to at least have the short discussion on whether 7:45 we keep, or if we want to go to eight or some other time, and thoughts, comments?
Either 4:00 or 5:00 for me.
7:45 is fine. I'm in Oregon, so it's a little early, but usually I'm in Connecticut, so 7:45 works for me. But 8:00 does too, I'm not really picky.
And Vince, you said either way?
Yeah, 7:45 is fine, but 8 o'clock is okay as well.
Bill, do you have an opinion?
Um, 8 o'clock's fine.
Laura?
8 o'clock is fine for me, too.
Okay, so let's take a vote, just so we have it official. Can I get a motion to reset our start time to 8:00 AM? I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Vince. Second? Jens, come on, baby.
Sorry, sorry, I'll second it.
All those in favor of moving our meeting time to 8 o'clock, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Alright, motion? Jens? Okay, so, current budget 2023-24, we are on track, I was gonna pull this up, do you guys want to see where we are? Hold on, I can but more importantly, we need to talk about 2024-25 budget, which is I've got our meeting with Vicky next week, so we kind of need to finish up looking at that, so let me just hold on. Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna share my screen. And just show you where we are for this year. So can you see that?
Yep.
We're well within budget, I'm not worried about going over on anything, and we have not spent our capital, but we are about to. I think we put the POs in for two studio cameras and a tall tripod. So those will be coming in, so we will spend our allocation of $5,300, but that's sort of, I'm gonna stop sharing right now. So any questions about our current status before I move on to the 2024-25 budget?
Nope.
Okay. So, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna share that in my screen again with that on it. Okay. So this is formatted how I'm gonna use, how I use it throughout this process, which is what we request, what the First Selectmen approves, what the Board of Finance approves, and then what Town Council. So we have a line for the videographers, projected to spend about $22,000, I'm gonna push it up just a tiny bit, but this is we've been bringing this number down over time, just because we haven't been spending all the money, so I'm trying to get it in more in line with reality. But we do have a couple new videographers, and we are trying to bring their rates more in line with neighboring communities, so they are getting a raise. Same thing with the, it's called Supervising Producer, and in the town budget, getting the name of an account changed is almost impossible. So this actually describes what Laura and Nat Schlenk do, editing and just keeping the channel running, with Laura doing the lion's share of the work. So this is just a reflection of maybe some more hours from Laura, and an adjustment in their rates as well. So that is bumped up 3,000. I've taken the office supply number down because we haven't been spending it, we tend to do all of our spending in the programming supplies bucket, which is our annual subscriptions for different kinds of software, like field equipment, and then a pretty big miscellaneous bucket for anything that Laura determines she needs during the course of the year, either consumables or new non-capital equipment add-ons or whatever. So that number's gonna stay about the same, because it is tied pretty to pretty specific expenses. Public relations, we've been allocating to marketing materials, we're actually spending some of that out of miscellaneous this year. We're ordering, you know, those pull-on caps and baseball caps with our logos, so that our videographers can wear them to a whole variety of events, and we think it might be a little more noticeable than the t-shirts, because they may not be wearing them, they might be under a jacket, whatever, so we've got that order in as well, from a Trumbull-owned printing facility. Travel, we haven't, I don't even know if the ACM conference has happened in the last two years, so we've taken that, I took that out of the budget finally, because we haven't spent it in the last three or four years, and then for some unknown reason, the phone at the Helen Plum Building is somehow allocated to our account, so I just have to put in is that, is that the right, am I saying that right, Bill? No?
No, the Verizon Wireless is the cellular Wi-Fi device that Laura has to
Oh, right, right.
create a hotspot for Wi-Fi.
We used to have the utilities at Helen Plum under us, and they got moved. Okay, so the big bucket that was not completely resolved right now is our capital projects budget. We want to buy two more cameras and another tall tripod, because those are good for school concerts, or parades, or wherever we need to get the camera a little higher up. We're trying to put all of our cameras on a cycle of replacing them every, not every 10 years, something more frequent than that. I am still waiting for a quote from DNR, and Laura, do you have any information on that, because time is running out, they're gonna want my budget like Monday or Tuesday at the latest, for my meeting with Vicky on Wednesday.
No, I will email Donnie today and bug him and tell him that, you know, that you're meeting Monday with Vicky.
So he has, he, Don from DNR has told us that some of our studio hardware slash software needs, including our computer, needs upgrading. So we're trying to get that into the budget. We have gone for special allocations in the past, but I prefer not to do that, because it's a whole Board of Finance process. And I guess the one other thing I would say is that we continue to have some money in the Board of Ed budget. There's like four line items that have referenced Channel 17 specifically, which is what we used to be called. I cannot get any detail from Long Hill on what has been spent in those line items. So Jeff, if you have any way to look at, I can send you the account numbers, like just, I just want to know if there's anything that is being paid for related to the channel that the Board of Ed is actually paying for, that I'm not aware of. And I've requested that information twice, but I have not gotten a response, so maybe you have access to those accounts, and I can send you the list of four or five that I'm looking for.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, great.
Yeah, I had to restart the camera. If you could send me account numbers, like I can, if it's in my line item, I can see it. If it's not in my budget, I won't be able to see it. I know there are like three or four that it's AV.
Yeah, AV Channel 17, yeah.
Well, but it's AV District Channel 17, so it's kind of all lumped into one, so, but I don't know if they're the same ones that you're talking about, so if you send me the accounts, I could check.
That would be awesome.
I do know we've looked in the past few years, and there was nothing spent there, so I
Well, I looked this year at the budget, you know, the online thing, and it looks like some amount of money has been spent, not a lot.
No, but what I'm saying is, the accounts that I'm looking at, that reference Channel 17, they're lumped in, in other words, it's basically District AV Channel 17. So that isn't Channel 17's, it's like AV in general. So like if a smart board dies in a classroom, it comes out of that line.
But it did pay for Channel 17 stuff in the past, I can tell you.
Well, that's why I'm saying, so you'd have to send me the numbers, because I know, we did look, and in the past three years, there was absolutely nothing on there, so I would want to validate that they're the same numbers.
Okay, great, I will send them to you. Alright, so comments and questions about this budget? And I think I sent it to all of you, so do you want me to keep it up on the screen? So my only, I would be sending this to Vicky, as is just adding in the DNR quote on the capital side.
I think it looks good, at least the things I know about.
I think it looks reasonable.
Okay, so Laura, anything else? I mean, we've gone over this, but I want to make sure you're good.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, I mean, I sent everybody the spreadsheet of the TCTV wishlist, and I think we're pretty on track. Again, the the studio control room hasn't really been touched in, I don't know, I guess about 10 years, the engineer said. So he wants to just kind of go in, and like Jens, when we were trying to troubleshoot some things, the cables were not labeled correctly. So he wants to go back and make sure they're properly labeled, just dust everything off, and then the PC that runs the ATM and the graphics is really, really slow, so that really needs to be upgraded. So that's, that's what that is, again, it's Control Room TLC.
Yeah, really, really want to get that done, especially the computer, so we just, we just need to get those numbers, or I'd rather there be a high estimate than low, and if we spend less, the town is happy, right?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so can I get a motion to present this budget as shown?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Jens, and then Vince, you're gonna
I'll second it, yeah.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And let me just explain, I think for some of the new guys, like, the Commission is officially made up of five people, me, Vince, Jens, and Ed Gillespie, and Amy Wiley. Amy and Ed are not on the call, but we do include other people in this meeting who have relevance to the topic. So that, hence Laura, hence Jeff, Jeff Hackett used to occasionally attend. Bill represents our interests at Town Hall, and now Mike is representing Trumbull High and the education system. So, just so you all understand who can and can't vote, but we have a pretty democratic, I think, approach here. Okay, so that's great, that was my, that was my main thing. So, let me ask you now, do you want to continue with the meeting? We have another meeting scheduled February 9th, we can either hold this as a regular meeting and do the February 9th meeting or not, depending upon what you guys want to do. We have 35 minutes before Bill needs to jump, I don't know about anybody else. The main thing I wanted to get done was the budget, so if you want to end it here, and unless Laura's got anything burning that she wants to talk about, we can have a longer meeting on the 9th, or we can have a full meeting now, and maybe, you know, cancel the 9th. I know, big decision.
I mean, if we cancel the 9th, then I think we should stick on this, but that's my opinion, just because I've gotten up already.
I think we may also need to vote to amend the agenda to be official.
Okay. Alright, well, why don't we, why don't we keep going then?
Okay.
See how far we can get.
That's fine.
Okay, so next up is, I'm actually, I just, I want to move to technical, because I know Bill might need to jump off earlier. So the council chambers' video distribution system, let's jump all the way to that agenda item, which is E-technical number three.
So as everyone's aware, we're currently in the process of swapping out that equipment and doing a new project to bring everything up to speed. The current tricaster is dying, so that needed to be addressed, and while we were doing it, we might as well make the room video conference friendly, and take a look at what we currently had there. So, we took some money from the ARPA funds, in addition to money that TCTV was allocated for the tricast replacement to a new video distribution system, and DNR came in, there were a couple companies that came in to give us quotes, and it was awarded to, the project was awarded to DNR, and they recommended changing out all of the microphones, all of the speakers, in-room microphones and things like that. So we're moving the system from the front of room to the rear of the room, putting a new desk out there, and they've started doing work on that project, so this was initially slated to go in. We were hoping to get in in November, got delayed because of scheduling, their schedule, and then Town Hall's schedule with the election, and needs for the council chambers, so that got pushed to December, so in early December, they came in and started to do the in-ceiling work and run new cables and things like that, but they hit a snag with the cameras. And so I guess while they were programming the cameras in their offices, before bringing them to Town Hall and setting them up, they ran some, to some issues, and had to return the cameras to try to get new ones to replace them, and that's where the supply chain issue is hitting, and that's causing delays, so they were supposed to be in, like, first week of January, that got pushed back to third week in January, and then fourth week in January, and so what they've made the decision to do is upgrade the cameras at their cost, because we're not able to get those cameras back from the manufacturer, it's a supply issue, so DNR is going to get different cameras from Panasonic, which are better, and we won't have to eat that cost, and they have given us a date of the week of February 19th to finally install with those new Panasonic cameras. We were trying to hope get them in for next Monday, but Panasonic has guaranteed that they'll be in at the DNR offices the week of the 12th. That'll give them a chance to program them, and then bring them in for the week of the 19th for the installation.
Okay, fingers crossed. Is there anything else that could delay us, do you think?
Cameras at this point are the item that's holding everything back, and you know, as I kind of joked with Don when I, he was on the phone, I was like, well, cameras are kind of critical to this operation, since we're doing a video project, so there's not much we can do without cameras.
Okay, well, thank you for staying on top of this, you know, it really is critical, I just hope the tricast doesn't die between now and February.
And then, yeah, following installation, obviously, we'll have to get the videographers in there and get trained. You know, and luckily, we've got Michelle, so the system that's going in now is almost a mirror system to what the Board of Ed has already implemented, so we at least have Michelle as a backup to run the system if we need to.
So she's trained, and we can use her to help, we're gonna train Arnie and
Dennis.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, so we just got to keep, we got to get that training going as soon as possible, so we can make the most of. And then we won't pull the old system until the new system is operational?
That's unclear, I think some of the, some of the system needs to be changed out, obviously, so when we're taking
So there'll literally be a switch over?
I think it's gonna be a clean switch over, so that will expose us a little bit for the week after in terms of meetings, but I think there's only a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for that week, Monday, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, that's would you
We have to plan, Laura, to have them shoot it regular.
Just in case.
Dennis has actually recorded something over, I think it was a POCD meeting in Long Hill Chambers, so he's not like up to speed, but he's at least familiar with it, and he was in the training when Michelle was trained, so he's not coming in cold, you know.
No, I mean, I mean, if it's not actually operational for a week, can we bring cameras into the chambers to record a meeting?
There's a camera and tripod always in chambers, because sometimes meetings are in conference rooms, and it's been used as backup should the tricastor crash midstream.
Which of course would never happen, but
No.
Okay, cool. Alright, great, well, Bill, again, thank you for staying on top of this, I know it's been a long haul, a year's long haul, but looks like we're actually inside of the finish line, so I really appreciate your diligence and staying on top of it, because I know it hasn't been easy, and you have a million other things you're responsible for. Okay, so let's go back to programming, Laura, what do you have to report?
Yes, programming, we have a new videographer, which is good news, it's somebody who works in the, I think it's the Stratford Public Schools, and he also has experience in Milford, so he comes in with his own equipment, he's got experience recording, using the tricastor system, live streaming, so it's great, he can hit the ground running, he actually recorded a basketball game last night, so
Maybe Mike knows him, what, maybe Mike knows him, what, his name is Garrett Smith?
Garrett Clark?
Clark.
Absolutely, Garrett is one of the directors of IT in Milford Public Schools.
Oh, yes, thank you.
His son is a student here at Trumbull High School.
Yes.
So that's a big get for us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Somebody that has that much experience, so we're really looking forward to having him on the team.
And it actually brought forth an interesting um project for me. Because um Kate and I really don't know where our rates fall. Compared to other local community channels, so I'm in the process of reaching out to other stations to find out. And the chair from MGA, which is the Milford Government Access Station. Um, asked if we could make this like a Google Doc where everybody could kind of see what's what, I mean, obviously. Every town's different, some of these stations may be four oh one two three, some of them may be part of the town's budget. But at least, you know, we can see whether we're in line or not, so um. That'll be interesting.
And based on what we know about Garrett's rate, we were, we are not.
Yes, that is true, that is true.
Remedy that.
That's kind of how this project came to be, um, because again, you know, it would, it would. As I, as Kate and I agreed, it would be a shame to lose somebody, you know, who's willing to do the work over an hourly rate. Um, right now, we're, I'm still looking for somebody who has daytime availability, um, because that's kind of where our hole is. Um, I mean Richie's always, Richie's available on daytime, but he can't be everywhere at once, and again, if he's sick. You know, then something doesn't get reported, so I'm looking for somebody who can help out with that, you know, with that end. Uh, excuse me, we're still recording winter sports, which is mostly basketball. Um, this week Jeff Altman is very excited, it's the Hillcrest Madison Crosstown Showdown, uh, which is always fun. Um, so that's that, and as Kate said, we're getting some fleece-lined beanies, which will be great for the football games and other winter events. And baseball hats, so I'm excited to see those, um. There have not, excuse me. There haven't been a ton of um original programming things happening right now. Um, we're going to be editing the, excuse me, T-Pod Dare Program, the. Positive Choices Healthy Kids that we sent out to the fifth graders during COVID, just because um the material in it. Was really well presented, um, and well received, so we're going to just give a little updated intro. And send that out to the kids and um, excuse me. And then, you know, again, the conservation, the Plan of Conservation and Development for the town, there's a meeting tonight. Um, and I've asked Michelle if she can record that so we can broadcast that as well. Uh, and I think that's pretty much it. Oh, the only other thing is that um, not to jump down, but. I, you know, we talked about, and Gillespie and I had discussed with Fairfield University getting an intern. Um, and I'm ready to move forward with that, because my question was, um, you know, what. Do I need to do to make sure this person can be in the building? So um, you know, I'm, I would presume that they're going to, um, well, what Todd had said is that to have them sign in as a guest. Um, I'm not sure if they need, Mike, maybe you can help me out here, I don't know if they need like a volunteer form or anything, because they. Shouldn't be working with students, they would just be helping us with social media, but Todd said just to have them. Sign in, get a visitor pass when they come in, and then, you know, proceed that way.
Yeah, that sounds like the right procedure with this case.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if they needed any paperwork at the Board of Ed, um, and the reason that came up is because in Handshake. Fairfield, uh, not Fairfield, Trumbull Public Schools already has an account. And um my, because the TCTV email is trumbups.org, it kind of assumed that I was from the public schools. So I do need to follow up in person just to kind of make a separate account for TCTV, because anybody who's interning. With the station is not interning with the schools, so I don't want to, you know, mix up any. Data points or any, you know, workflow that way. But that's where I'm at with that.
Good, so and do they have, do we know if they have anybody that's interested?
Um, I haven't reached out to them yet, I just wanted to get the paperwork. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then I will pester Donnie.
Okay. Alright, so anything else on programming, Laura? Okay, so let's.
Nothing I can think of, no.
Okay, so let's move on to technical, the THS Studio uh status update. That's the stuff, what we need from DNR, right? Okay. Uh, any other studio upgrade suggestions? We ordered a couple of things, so.
Yes, we ordered, um, for the election, I ordered some LED uplights, um. To make that black curtain look a little less ominous. And um I ordered a photo backdrop stand, we were using some black bed sheets. But um I have since ordered some real backdrops, I ordered a black one and I ordered a green screen one. Um, and a steamer to get the wrinkles out, so that way when TCTV or if students come in and use it, they can um. Use those pieces as well.
Okay, um, let's see, we talked about the council chambers, um, backup storage, cloud decision. I think we already, we already did this, we already started this, right? Laura, so we've, we put, we had, we had money in this year's account, it'll, we'll have enough for next year, I mean, it's in the. Budget for next year, I think the only thing we haven't fully resolved is our policy on archiving.
Right. We need to, yes, I think Jens and um Ed and I will need to. Discuss that.
Alright, so if you can, if you can come back to us with, at the next meeting with your recommendation, we just. We just need to amend our policy and get it in there, so. You know, we have something set. Okay, uh, closed captioning, um, we, if that's already available on YouTube and Facebook. I think the only thing Laura, we talked about doing was getting instructions on how to access that onto the website, so people can.
Right.
Know how to do it.
Right. I can update, I already had a promo, but I just do need to update it.
And then the quote to put it on our TV feed, um. Laura, we talked about that, and where's my notes, hold on.
I think our, I mean, it was a couple thousand dollars, it was anywhere from about twenty-five hundred to five thousand, depending on whether we did. Government only or all programming, if I remember right.
And we decided to wait, correct?
Right, because we already have, again, most, a lot of the government meetings. Go on to Facebook and YouTube and with the V Mix, more can go on to Facebook and YouTube where it will be provided. And we decided to hold because there's not really, like. We haven't heard a lot of feedback that it's something that people are looking for, so it just didn't make sense to spend that kind of money. Unless we know that that's something that people are really hoping to see.
So we're going to be paying more attention um in the coming year to to uh. Usage on Facebook and YouTube, and then we'll see if we're getting requests. To have closed captioning on the actual TV feed and we'll go from there.
Right.
Okay. Marketing PR, we have the caps and beanies on order. Um, but I do want to get to the, to the Trumbull High connection, um, because I know we're getting close to the hour here. So Fairfield U, we talked about, so the Todd Manual meeting, I think resulted in Mike. Being.
Find a place.
Yep. But Mike, it's, it sounds like you have some great experience that we could actually learn from, so I'm wondering. If we, if it would be possible for me and Laura and you to have a Zoom call or me, or meeting or something, so you can just. Give us more information about what your experience has been, and then we can try to. Piece together, how do we continue to improve what we're doing and how the high school and the channel can be more closely aligned? Because I know we can't do everything at once, but I think if we, if we know what you're used to and what you're used to supporting, then we can, then. Together, we can figure out how do we support that at the high school.
Yeah, that'd be great, um, I'll actually, you know, in in between the meeting here, I will um get like course, course descriptions and stuff that. Were implemented at my old school, and we can take a look at and see if it's possible here at at Trumbull High School. It probably won't be for next school year, but for the year after, but at least we'll get the conversation started.
Well, and if there's anything that you think we can start to do now, because we have had an AV club, we have had, you know, there have been video. Uh, announcements, right, Laura, uh? Used to do it.
In the past, he was a board of that employee who was the AV specialist at the high school.
So we have had some iterations of this, but we, we definitely want to pick your brain and see, okay, what has to be? Would we have to wait to get budget allocations or curriculum adjustments, and is there, are there other things that we could start doing now? Because we do have a couple of student videographers, we have had Katie Bowens, we, the people team. Uh, they did election night for us, um. Just how do we get the school to use the studio more, so? Um, I don't know if it's better for you if we do an in-person meeting, or if you prefer Zoom, we we can come to Trumbull High. Um, so Laura, maybe you can coordinate that between the three of us. And I'm sure Mike has lots of free time to. But I think even a half an hour meeting, we could, I think we could find out a lot, and then that would help us prioritize. And figure out resource-wise, what we can support and when.
And the time, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but the timing is perfect, because I know, I'm sure, Mike, you will agree. That um one of the things Todd Manuel is advocating for in this year's budget is more staff. To increase the elective opportunities for students. So that would be a nice uh dovetail.
Okay, so Laura, you're gonna uh coordinate.
Yes.
Something happen with us.
Yep.
Okay, that looks like our agenda, um. Fulfilled. So what do we want to do about the February eighth meeting? I think my only thought is that that will be post-meeting with Vicky, and I will, will I, what, hey, Bill, are you still there? What's the budget timeline? Does anybody know, like, when the budget, when Vicky has to give the budget to the Board of Finance? I think I'm at the end of the. I wish Bill was there, I think, I think I'm one of the. Last people to go presenting to Vicky. Which means, somehow I think that that goes to the Board of Finance in February, but I might be wrong. Jeff or Mike, do you know what Board of Ed budget goes to the town? Or is it already gone to the town?
I, I don't think it's going to the town yet, because we just presented to our board, so I don't think it's been approved by the actual board. Yet, to actually go to the council, so.
Yeah, uh, the board, our board is not, is not voting on it until February, as, so maybe the end of February might be, might go to the finance.
Okay, so then, I would suggest we, we skip the me, the February eighth meeting. And pick up in March, unless something happens and we need to reconvene before then. And then hopefully that will leave plenty of time for Mike and Laura and I to meet and have some thoughts to share with you guys. Does that work? Laura, it's mainly, you know, what do you need?
I, I can't really think of anything, I mean, you, everybody's been really responsive on email if I've had questions, so.
Okay, so I think I need a motion to uh to cancel the February eighth meeting and. Come back to our schedule on March twenty-first. Then second, thank you.
I'm so seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed, abstentions, um, okay, any other uh? Agenda items we need to talk about? Jens, thank you so much for getting up so early, I, I, I.
I hadn't done nothing else.
I wouldn't have done it, I wouldn't have done it. Again, I would have said, no, I'm sorry, I'm not, not checking in. Alright, great, well, the. The main thing was we got the budget approved, um, I, I'm not anticipating any issues, um. Town's been very supportive of us, so uh of, if something unexpected happens, I'll let you know, but otherwise, we will reconvene. On March twenty-first.
Sounds good.
Alright, great, oh, Bill.
Sounds good.
Let me ask him real quick, so Bill. Budget timing, when is Vicky finna, when is she delivering the bu, her budget to the Board of Finance, do you know?
Um, so I know departments are meeting starting next week, and I think.
Also, I'm at the beginning of the process. Okay, somehow I thought it was.
My meeting's next Friday, so um, yeah, if yours is Wednesday, mine's Friday, so she's in the process of meeting with us soon. It'll probably be a few weeks after that, until the budget gets recommended to the Board of Finance.
Okay, well, we just voted to cancel the February eighth meeting and just uh hold out for March twenty-first, and if something happens that we need to do. Something in between, we will, but I, I can't, I can't imagine what that would be. Okay, so then I think we are done, I can have a motion for adjournment? At eight forty-nine? Thank you, Jens.
I'm seconded.
Alright, are you gonna back, go back to bed, Jens, are you up for the day?
No, I, I am, my workday starts at six thirty, I work for a company in Minneapolis, so. But I get to get off work at three o'clock, so that's.
Nice. Alright, great, Jeff, anything you need to bring up to us, or Mike, anything else you've got?
No, just if you could send me those codes and I'll, I'll try to.
I'll do it as soon as I get off the call.
And if they do intermingle, I'm going to try to suggest that they can just have a separate line for. You know, I mean, for Channel Seventeen.
Well, let's see what, what you find out, and then maybe you and I can get on the phone and just figure out if, is there a better way or whatever, I don't, I, you know, I don't want to like. Cause a big thing, I just want to make sure I know what's where.
Perfect.
Okay, cool, alright, thanks everybody for making the call and um, see you in a couple of weeks.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.